I will begin the meeting with a pledge of the flag, all by members. The pledge of allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and one. Thank you. Let me proceed to everyone, please take a moment to silence your cell phone or any other non-essential questions you have that might be a thief or a ring or a wireless. Publicly, the agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online and on the city's website. We have a number of presentations this evening, and so I'll return to the mayor and let her do that.
I'm going to stand over in proclamation corner. Chris. It's the pastors. He wants to. So this proclamation is in recognition of National Preservation Month, which is May 2023. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And everyone has places that are important to them, places they care about, places that matter. This matters is a national campaign that encourages people to celebrate the places that are meaningful to them and to their communities. And it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by the dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. Now, therefore, I, Dr. Mona Becker, Mayor of the City of Westminster, do proclaim May 2023 as National Preservation Month in the City of Westminster and call upon the people of Westminster to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance adopted by me this eighth day of May 2023. And with me, I have Ms. Kristin Masters. Who is the chair of our historic preservation. There you go.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything?
I'd just like to thank the city for its ever-present support of the Historic District Commission. And I have to say that we have a lot of good things this year coming up that we'll be bringing to the council. And if you want to see some action, come and look at us at the Flower Jazz Festival. We'll be with the city to hand you on information on how to preserve our homes and businesses.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you.
This proclamation is in recognition of National Police Week and Peace Officer Memorial Day. Whereas there are more than 900,000 sworn law enforcement officers now serving in the United States, including the dedicated members of the Westminster Police Department. And since the first recorded police death in 1791, over 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which that date falls as Police Week. And National Police Week, established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, pays federal recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And the members of the Westminster Police Department provide a vital public service working to ensure the safety and protection of community members, homes, businesses, and schools. And the mayor and common council wish to publicly salute the services of the officers of the Westminster Police Department. Now, therefore, I, Dr. Mona Becker, Mayor of the City of Westminster, in conjunction with the common council, to hereby proclaim May 14th through the 20th, 2023, as National Police Week and May 15th, 2023, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the City of Westminster. And be it further proclaimed that all residents are encouraged to join the mayor and common council in commemorating this observance by thanking the members of the Westminster Police Department, past and present, for their dedicated service to Westminster community and for their efforts in keeping our community safe, adopted this eighth day of May 2023. Thank you, thank you. Would you like to say anything?
Just my sincere thanks to the mayor council for your unyielding support and the community. One of our recruitment sayings is that the community supports us here in Westminster. It recharges our batteries, so thank you to all.
These are our budget categories, aren't they? It's fine, all right. So this memorial proclamation is in recognition of National Public Works Week 2023. Whereas public work services provided in the City of Westminster are an integral part of our residents' everyday lives, and the services provided by the Westminster Public Works Department shall include utility maintenance, snow plowing, which was little this year, water treatment and distribution, sewage treatment, street repairs, facility maintenance, and repair of city equipment. And the health and safety, comfort, and quality of life of the Westminster community greatly depends on these services. And the quality and effectiveness of these services, as well as their planning, design, and implementation, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of the city's public work employees. And whereas the mayor and common council wish to publicly salute the services and contributions of the employees of Westminster Public Works Department. Now, therefore, I, Dr. Mona Becker, Mayor of the City of Westminster, in conjunction with the common council, do hereby proclaim May 21st through 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week in the City of Westminster. And be it further proclaimed that all residents are encouraged to join the mayor and common council in commemorating the observance, this observance, by thanking the members of the Public Works Department, past and present, for their dedicated service to the City of Westminster and for their efforts to maintain and enhance the quality of life in the Westminster community, adopted this eighth day of May 2023. And on hand to receive this is Deputy Director, Mr. John Dick. You're welcome. Do a picture here first.
I mean, do I yell?
Sometimes. Would I say anything?
Just thank you and the council. The whole administration at 45, without everybody working together, we wouldn't be able to do the job that we do in the city. And make sure that everybody gets to feel it.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You can come around anyways. All right. So here, I'll say. All right, here we go, all right. So this proclamation is recognizing Artie Bowman and his sons in Corkville. Whereas Bowman's is a locally owned and operated retail supplier of food and pet supplies based in Westminster, Maryland. And owners Dale and Dirk Bowman and their team have been good community partners for local businesses and organizations throughout the area for the last 95 years. And whereas in December 2022, owner Dale Bowman contacted the City of Westminster with the request to donate to the Westminster Police Department's K9 program. And in April 2023, Bowman successfully helped in acquiring K9 Leo. And whereas such a donation is generous in nature and a shining example of the hardworking, locally-owned businesses dedicated to giving back to their community. And the City of Westminster's Police Department graciously accepted the generous donation towards the purchase of K9 Leo. Now, therefore, I, Dr. Mona Becker, the mayor of the City of Westminster, join the members of the common council and the city staff in expressing our collective gratitude for the contribution of a new K9 for the Westminster City Police Department, which will benefit the entire City of Westminster community, adopted this eighth day of May 2023. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I believe Leo has successfully completed his training, that's right.
That's right. Absolutely.
All right, here we go.
Thank you.
Does it say anything, Heather, one?
Sure, I certainly, certainly appreciate the recognition by the mayor and the city councils. I do. Thankful for the, the community supported all the services of the Westminster City Police. Dirk and I were very privileged and honored to be able to contribute or participate toward that acquisition of Leo. Much appreciated, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. That's great, thank you, Dr. Becker. One of the things I'd like to note prior to the meeting is to recognize the strong and growing relationship we have with McDaniel College. When Dr. Julia Jaskin took over as president of the college, she promised to increase engagement, and she said that she would try to have a member of her senior staff present with her that as many council meetings as possible to share information on what's happening up on the hill. We appreciate that very much, and that person would be able to go back and share information with the senior staff about what's going on in the city. So we'll tease tonight to have Dr. Wendy Morris, the dean of faculty at McDaniel College, and thank you very much for coming today.
You bet. So first, I wanted to thank those of you who were able to make it to our academic symposium on May 1st. I know Dr. Mona Becker, Kevin Deha, Sarah Impulse were all there, it was a wonderful event. You had several people in the community, parents, it's going to be an annual event, so we encourage you to attend in the future. It highlights student research, faculty research, staff research, experimental learning, and relationships with the town as well, and service learning. And then also, I just wanted to make you aware of a few dates coming up where there will be increased McDaniel-related activity in town. Our commencement ceremony is May 20th, so you will have a lot of people in town, families coming that weekend to celebrate their students. Alumni Weekend is June 2nd to June 4th, so we will have our alum coming back. And then finally, as we've done in past years, our new students will be part of the Downtown Westminster Walk, and they will be doing that walk on Saturday, August 26th. And I'm sure someone from the college will be reaching out to various businesses. Thank you.
Thank you very much, great to have you here. Now have a public hearing, public hearings in the city of Westminster are provided by the mayors.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, so call this public meeting the order, or sorry, this public hearing the order. This is for Resolution 23-02, Annexation Number 75, enlarging the corporate boundaries of the City of Westminster by annexing into the city certain property containing 73.9464 acres contiguous and adjoining to the city's existing corporate boundaries, consisting of the industrial, industrially-zoned portion of real property located at 1131 Avondale Road, Westminster, Maryland 21157, also identified as tax account number 07-028555, map 0045, grid 0021, parcel 0046, and comprising 72.8722 square feet and 1.0742 acres of state highway administration property containing a portion of Maryland Route 31, New Windsor Road. Anyone who would like to comment or in the public hearing? Please identify yourself for the record.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Kelly Miller, 73 East Main Street, Westminster, Maryland 21157. I am here tonight on behalf of the applicant. I have with me Mr. Scott Hare, who is the property owner and responsible for all the entity names that you see on there, it's really just Scott. And then Emily, the incoming, Emily Horn, who prepared the plat that accompanied this petition here tonight. You have a very comprehensive part of your packet related to this, so I'm not going to belayer most of these points, but this property is in the priority funding area and the growth area for the City of Westminster. I think I would assert to you that this will be a good addition of industrially-zoned land to the city limits. Right now, it's undeveloped, so it's, but like you've been said, it's all industrial land that front bottom 30s on. So the location of this property is probably saw from the maps is directly across from the wastewater treatment plant in the city, which therefore makes it eligible for annexation. It can continue down Route 31, we'll then pass the rest of the kind of industrial zone properties as well. Several of those properties are also within priority funding area and annexable area, so this would open them up in theory, although it has to do without making enclave to annexation. So I think this would be a good economic benefit to the city. This has been several years in the making, for those of you who were on the Economic Development Committee a few years back, you will remember the initial request came forward to include this property in the water and sewer service areas. So that was several years ago, and that was kind of the beginning of our journey here. We've been through the county review process, obviously infused by this body, and then what proved the county review process, receiving favorable recommendations from the County Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners. We then came back to the city's planning commission, received a favorable recommendation from the city's planning commission. And so now tonight, we're here before you, asking for this approval, the final approval for this annexation. We are happy to answer any specific questions, like the thought you might have, this is early your first opportunity to ask any substantive questions of us, so that's why we have our whole team here available. If you have any questions, I think this is pretty straightforward, and I appreciate Mr. Depo's staff report and Scareheart, I know she is also drafted this staff report, I read through it, it's, it's very comprehensive, but in the event that there are any questions, we are here and available for you. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else has.
Thank you, I just want to update you what has happened since the introduction of the resolution. The resolution was introduced to Mayor and Common Council on February 13th, 2023. And as discussed at this meeting, the resolution was amended to reflect that individuals currently reside within the annexation area. Recall, the resolution state, nobody was living there. Pursuant to the annotated code, on February 15th, 2023, and March 1st, 2023, the Annexation Resolution and Annexation Plan were forwarded to Carroll County and Maryland Department of Planning, respectively. On March 21st, 2023, the Carroll County Planning and Zoning Commission provided a favorable recommendation of the annexation to the Board of County Commissioners. On March 30th, 2023, the Carroll County Board of Commissioners discussed Annexation Number 75. Due to outstanding Carroll County Public Works concerns with portions of Stone Chapel Road and Avondale Road, county, these are county-owned and maintained roadways located with the annexation area. The Commissioners moved to continue the Annexation 75 review to April the 6th, 2023. On March 29th, 2023, the Maryland Department of Planning forwarded its review comments to the city. On April 6th, 2023, the Board of Commissioners again discussed Annexation Number 75. As a result of their concerns, portions of Stone Chapel Road and Avondale Road, the county-owned and maintained roadways were removed from the annexation area. As a result, the total area of annexation reduced from the original 75.9797 acres to 73.9464 acres, and the resolution reflects this change as well. On April 20th, 23, the city's Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on Annexation 75, which included an amendment to the Resolution 2302 to reflect the reduced annexation area. The Planning and Zoning Commission forwarded Annexation 75, including Annexation Resolution 2302, as amended, to the City of Westminster Mayor and Common Council with a favorable recommendation. The annexation petition meets the requirements in the annotated code. The annexation area is contiguous and adjoining the existing boundaries of the City of Westminster. Annexation of the property will not create an isolated area or enclave of unincorporated land within the City of Westminster boundaries. Pursuant to the Annexation Code, on April 1st, 8th, 15th, and 22nd of 2023, a notice of public hearing to be held by the Mayor and Common Council, the 8th, appeared in the Carroll County Times. Following tonight's public hearing for Annexation Number 75, including the Annexation Plan and Resolution 2302, the Mayor and Common Council may first adopt Annexation Plan Resolution 2302, which is Attachment 8 of the staff report, then may adopt Annexation Resolution 2302, Attachment 7. The Department of Planning and Development recommends that the Mayor and Common Council adopt Annexation Plan for Annexation 75, as provided in Attachment 8. We further recommend that the Mayor and Common Council approve Annexation 75 and Annexation Resolution 2302, as amended, and as provided in Attachment 7 of this report. And that completes my staff report, I'm available for any questions.
Any questions from the council?
Ms. Russell, it's okay for the council members to ask questions, don't they?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. As opposed to doing when we introduce the ordinance? I'm sorry, as opposed to when we introduce the actual order.
Well, since this is your public hearing, if you have any questions of anybody, this would be an appropriate time to ask.
I do have a question, is that if somebody could give a little bit of clarity. So there's a section of the property that is conservationally, conservation zone. Could you speak a little bit, because looking at the aerial, trying to figure out why that was conservation zone originally, and, you know, I guess whether, was there any discussion about bringing that in as well, or just kind of give a little bit of background on, on that particular chunk of land?
Absolutely, so according to this property is conservation zone, as you've identified, that's not subject to this annexation request. That portion of property is not in the growth area, so it's not eligible for annexation. It's also, I think Maryland Department of Planning, maybe you can, if he has any insight into this, I think Maryland Department of Planning also has not encouraged allocation of water, public facilities to conservation zone properties as well. So for those multiple reasons, it was ineligible for annexation, the conservation zone portion. I can't say this with 100% certainty, because I can't go back to the exact history of why that was zone conservation, but there are residentially-developed properties across from that conservation portion on Stone Chapel, so I would venture a guess that that was kind of a buffer for those properties, because the rest of the Stone Chapel from edge of this is across from an already developed industrial piece as well. So that's, that's just an educated.
But there's no feature, because technically, it might be, it could go down a rabbit hole of zoning and Carroll County zoning. But there doesn't appear to be, to me, any identifiable conservation, what you consider like, if there's no street, not always.
Feature, as you want to know, I don't believe, but that was specifically zone conservation.
So that could always, and not that that's a subject of what we're here about today, but that could always be revisited down the road, because I'm not a big fan of the concept of, and this is not us, this is the valley, not a big fan of the concept of people doing zoning as creating a buffer. I think, but a few times they've done that in Freedom, that it doesn't make any theoretical sense. I was just wondering what the history was there, but that's been conservation zone for a long time.
For some time, certainly, I believe, since that, I mean, the property has changed.
More of a curiosity question than relevant to, to this, I'm just kind of curious what the.
It is relatively, well, somewhat unusual, that's what's. It is relatively, well, somewhat unusual, that splits in property, so.
Yes.
I'm a bit of a curiosity, I guess.
But it can be fixed later down the road at some point potentially. Okay, thanks.
Just bring. Well, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I.
Thank you, yes, I know, I mean, council member, I jumped in, I couldn't even recognize.
Ah, I apologize.
Yeah, right. You're very lucky I'm a rookie and I don't have a sword. Uh, Councilmember Kabachi, yes.
Thank you, Madam. First of all, I think this is exciting, and it's good, this is this great little city, it's positive. Um, I, 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 I guess two things, one, nice table, a pheasant off of this piece of property. I think I can hunt one, I think seventies and early eighties, that's hunt this property. Um, there's probably two days a week after a stall. Um, great pheasant hunting out there at that. But that aside, um, do you have a sense, I, I, I didn't, you know, I mean, you'll have to answer this. Because we're not entertaining that at the moment, but do you have a sense of what you're ultimately going to do with it? With your long term plan, and so you have specific use, or you're just actually.
Kind of the biggest thing, getting this rid of. Um, I've been with the nineteen years.
Yeah.
And off the ground, through the process, through the literature, back and forth, the same city.
Yeah.
I had gotten health department clear open because it's me, I had no interest in my property. I gotta spend a lot of money with health department approval, with content plans. They owe my plans up at the time, that they had interest in it, it was in a future allocation area.
Yeah, if you all recall that, it was partially in water and sewer service area.
Yeah, yeah.
So it kind of cut through the middle, so that's where Scott was stumped between well and subject, you know, and public facilities. And so he kind of jumps out and. Exactly.
Well, I think it's, I think it was already. Well, I think down the road, these are very positive things, like, yeah, nice ribbon cuttings out there one day.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, whatever we do, um, we like.
But we'd like to have nice things, as I said.
Yes, Council President Pepper.
Thank you. Um, so, um, like, first of all, I'm, you know, pleased to see the annexation of the whole, I think, city. We're glad to see a large, a large land coming in. A lot of potential to, I don't know if what's going to happen on that property, but whether it unlocks as well, so, so please see that happen. Um, my question though, really, I guess, is for Mr. Deep Hope. Um, so, so you alluded to the county taking action to remove the county roads from the annexation. What impact does that have?
So it, it has none. I think there was some confusion, at least that's what I, my take at the, at the planning commission man, in the board of commissioners meeting, was there was some confusion as to ownership and maintenance of it. Um, we, I made it clear that regardless of us annexing the property, we do not take ownership of the roadway. And we did not want to maintain the roadway, and we also agreed to enter into any, any agreement whereby the county would maintain um maintenance responsibilities of that. We, I made it clear that we were not anticipating or looking at maintaining the roadway.
Right. Um, that's, that's my question, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? And we'll see this later as well, under adoption. If there's any other comments? During this class?
Thank you.
All right, move on now to the minutes. Uh, we have a four minutes of the meeting of the Mayor and Common Council on April forty fourth. Special meeting next, for the Mayor and Common Council on May first, and a special meeting of the Mayor and Common Council on May second. Then the motion to open the meetings. Right, then a motion by Mr. Gilbert, the second by Mr. Dayhoff, others are favorable, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say aye, yeah, seem to have an answer, have it. Um, minutes are approved, thank you. Report from the mayor, Dr. Beck.
Hi, um, everyone's gonna get my talking out early. Uh, in the meeting, um, so I don't have a short quote, I'll keep it a little in the short side. Uh, I just wanted to say the last weeks have been incredibly busy, uh, with everyone, especially with the finance committee and the budget workshops uh that we've had. I know the budget is always agenda for adoption season. Uh, I know that everyone will likely have something to comment on the budget uh later this evening. So I just wanted to take some time uh during my comments to say thank you and a job well done to the staff uh who built a budget that addresses the items that myself and the council ones see funded for this fiscal year. Um, I'm very proud of this budget, parts of which, again, I'm sure will be addressed later this evening. Um, as in everything over the last two years, we've all worked really quite well as a team uh for the residents of the city of Westminster, and I look forward to working with this group in the future. Um, also this past, over the last two weeks, I've had the pleasure of swearing in and meeting the election judges that are uh will play a vital role in the municipal election tomorrow that's taking place. Uh, don't forget to go out and vote tomorrow. Uh, and I also wanted to say an extra big thank you to our city clerk, Mr. Doug Barber, for all his extra long days in the last several weeks with the budget and the election at the same time. So thank you, Mr. Barber. And that's all, Mr. President.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Becker. Move on now to a report from standing committee, again as we always do, with our Arts Council, the Avon, Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, a lot of exciting programming at the Arts Council, um, check the website um for additional information. Um, also, the um, the Arts Council will begin shortly um renewing our strategic plan with the Maryland um Arts Council and for our Arts Council, uh, which involves a lot of planning, a lot of budgeting, a lot of uh setting the parameters of what it is that we want to accomplish in the next uh couple of years with the Arts Council. Uh, there's a special emphasis on, I'm chairing it, so the chair has a special emphasis on reaching out to some of the other municipalities and the rest of the county, and we have a particular interest in diversity issues, and that would be my report, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. I'm not the community development.
Uh, thank you, Council President. I just want to mention that our next meeting is Wednesday, April the seventeenth, at three P M at forty five West Main. Um, and speaking of the budget, I just kind of want to highlight two things that are really important from the economic community development standpoint. And uh downtown is in the current fiscal year, uh, we had funds allocated towards a parking study, uh, which is taking place currently underway. Uh, which will be really a parking study for downtown exclusively. Uh, and in fiscal year twenty four's budget, uh, we have funds allocated to start the process of looking at zoning downtown and updating our zoning code in particular as it relates to downtown. Uh, and I'm really excited about that, because one of those big motivating factors, what I ran uh two years ago, uh, was improving and doing things to improve uh the economic climate downtown and making Main Street the best we possibly can. And these two things are part of that process, the building block. I know sometimes we get frustrated because we want things to happen right away, but a lot of this is about the building block. You know, we've been working on getting water, we have water reuse coming forward, doing a parking study, and now we're looking at zoning. So it just means a lot of exciting things, I think, are going to start happening uh on Main Street and downtown as we zoom forward over the coming year or so. I'm excited for that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Hot. Uh, on the finance committee, um, you said that we will have the work of the finance committee as well as the staff. I've been close a few minutes, so I will not, you know, add to that anymore now, whatever opportunities, a few minutes. Uh, President, what can I do, Mr. Gilbert?
Uh, yes, I have a couple of things. I just wanted to draw everybody's attention again to the website regarding city positions. Um, the position of Director of Public Works has been posted. Um, if you're looking for any summer um jobs, uh, we still have lifeguarding pool manager and assistant pool manager positions open. In addition to that, um, our park, our Parks and Rec Department is looking for family fitness attendant and a group fitness instructor. And also as far as our uh lease department, we're looking for a communication specialist and entry and lateral officers and um our public works department is also looking for a construction inspector and equipment operator. Um, just to say a few words um regarding personnel, um, our budget, which has, which um will, which has been greatly worked upon with everybody over the last few weeks. Um, we'll also be um adding some positions to our, um, great city of Westminster family. So you'll be looking at seeing um a few positions for our wastewater treatment plant coming out um very shortly, so just wanted to take a note of that, um, and that's it.
All right, very good. Thank you. Um, I would say, Mr. Kalaj.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we talked about a little earlier, when we thanked the Valens, uh, PFC Kevin Chinapi and his K nine partner Leo completed the official initial K nine training and certification through the North American Police Work Dog Association. And with K nine teaming is now certified and operational to conduct narcotic detection, tracking article searches and area searches. That's exciting. Officer Cynthia Hall and Jonathan Ray successfully completed their probationary period and were awarded their police officer first class chemo runs. So that's great. They'll be out there working independently. Certainly need a police officer, Stephen Winkler successfully completed his field training and evaluation program and is now patrolling solo, so that's one of the two. Police officer Trevino Elliott successfully completed Maryland comprehensive compliance training. He was sworn in on Friday, I believe, Mr. Hot, we swore him in, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Pretty cool, wasn't it?
It was.
Um, and uh, he was sworn in on Friday and will be completing his field training and evaluation programs. All good news and things more people on the streets are a positive thing, I always could use some more.
Well, yeah, thank you, Mr. Interracking. Uh, can you also go to public works?
I can, Mr. President. The public works department established a new beautification effort on Main Street by hanging some lovely flower baskets from the fashion and street lights, uh, that they've extended that to Lucas Lane as well. Um, and that was a suggestion from one of our local uh citizens uh to do that, so we're glad we're able to get that done. Items will be flushed in the following areas on May eighth, ninth, and tenth, between seven and eleven P M. That'll be on Stone Gate Road, one forty Village, one forty east of Malcolm Drive and Borsuch Road. So those areas might experience a little bit of color, this discoloration in their drinking water, right? Yes, Vic. Uh, that doesn't mean that it's unsafe, it just doesn't look safe, really.
Mm-hmm. Councilmember Kabachi, can, all right, can you say those dates again?
Eighth, ninth, and tenth of May, seven P M to, I'm sorry, seven, yeah, seven P M to Monday.
Okay, great, thank you.
Do you want me to send this to you in emails?
Sure, that'd be great, Matt.
Do that right now.
Yeah, may I have it also, please? Send it to everybody, yes, of course. That's all, and we always. Thank you, thank you for that. That's really useful information, appreciate it. Uh, recreation and parks, Mr. Dayhoff.
A lot of exciting things. We got some nice events coming up and um we really appreciate the budgets before we have done. I'll refer to the director for detail.
All right, we'll get to her doing departmental reports.
Yeah, for you.
Uh, and I have nothing else to uh add on behalf of the technology community. So we'll move on now to council common things, expecting us to be able to, members to uh make the comments or share their thoughts on items, not let go on any of the things.
Yeah, two things, Mr. President. Number one, I'd like to echo what the mayor said, um, had the opportunity to work a little bit with um a city clerk through this process, um, at the council, maybe liaison for the election. Since I'm not up for election this time around, uh, I'm, nothing but impressed with Mr. Barber, who's done he's meticulous, corrupt, and every T and dotting every dot, every I. Um, so I just wanted to thank him, um, in advance of tomorrow for all the hard work you've done and confident this is going to be a wonderful day. Um, number two, um, I, I just wanted to wish my colleagues that are up for election, uh, good luck tomorrow. Hope uh, hope everything goes as expected. I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Racking. Uh, Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm also excited about the budget. Um, this is not my first radio with budgets, and I think it's about the best presentation and the, you know, the, the most carefully and thoughtfully crafted budget that I've ever seen. So I, I really like to appreciate that. Um, I guess I also wanted to mention, and perhaps the chief can help me out with this. Both Winkler and Hall graduated from the academy, correct?
Right, um, all graduated, yeah.
Okay, okay.
We're gonna graduate.
And to, and to highlight the partnership that we have of the sheriff's office, and then this is another successful outcome of that. And they're both wonderful police officers.
Correct.
And I really appreciate that. And, Mr. President, do you remember that back in two thousand and one, we started to process a man who was a rich property? I, I remember it quite well. I re- I remember it quite well. So we've been working on this for twenty two years. I'm looking forward to us achieving that. Um, I don't think I have anything else, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Dayhoff. Um, Ms. Gilbert.
Um, I have a couple of things. Um, first of all, I guess I'll carry on with the idea of the election. I just wanted to take a moment to thank um everyone who is sitting up here at these tables. Um, the last four years has pretty, pretty much been a pretty amazing experience for me. Um, so I've been blessed to be a part of my wonderful team. Um, and I just wanted to say that just in case I don't come back. Um, you never know. Um, but I wanted to express my thanks to everyone up here, um, making me feel very welcomed and imparting no wisdom upon me. Um, so thank you to everyone. Um, outside of that, uh, some of the things I wanted to touch on was, again, the rain decided to um move the Parks and Recs Department, um, I naturalist event on Friday the twenty eighth. Um, they didn't cancel it altogether, but at least it was moved um to the Armory Building. And I had the pleasure of making lots of little pine cone bird feeders for a little while. So I wanted to thank the staff, but the kids were so excited. Um, and I was ready to go once the bugs and the reptiles were getting ready to emerge from their cages, so I decided to leave at that point. Um, but the kids all had a blast, and it was great to see the enthusiasm um with all those kiddos. Um, and speaking of kiddos, um, this past Thursday, Councilman Kabachi and I attended the youth awards ceremony for the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, and I was kind of half working at the same time I was there, but I was sitting in the back and it was pretty quiet until all the children came running in. And the enthusiasm um and the excitement, it just changed the level, um, just changed the total level of the room and, and just the atmosphere of the room, and I just wanted to um thank not only the Boys and Girls Club, but everyone who's part of the Boys and Girls Club, um, and the relationships that they have with the kids and with our community. Um, it's such a positive difference um that they make in their lives. And I wanted to congratulate not only the kids and the graduates, but also the Boys and Girls Club, because they are going to be opening a new location in Hampstead very shortly. So I wanted to extend um a great congratulations to all of them and um remind everyone that the Flower Jazz Festival is coming up. Um, this coming's happening, and I believe that's it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gilbert, Ms. Hall.
Uh, yes, thank you, Council President. Um, so this is the second uh budget I have been through. And I, I, I will say, I am really proud of all the hard work that we collectively as a council, um, as finance committee, as staff, have put into the budget. Um, you know, we have worked really hard over the past two years to work with our federal partners or state partners to help bring in money into this city to get some really big picture projects done. Uh, and that is a credit to the teamwork that we have up here, um, as well as the amazing staff that we have. And I want to point out the fact that we're doing all this without raising taxes within the city of Westminster. And I am just really proud of the leadership team that we got here, council wise and staff wise, uh, because we're accomplishing some really big things that are going to pay off for the citizens of Westminster down the road. Um, so, great work on the budget. Um, and I want to wish all my council colleagues that are up tomorrow, uh, very good luck. Um, and it has been a real pleasure serving with each of you. Um, you all bring different strengths to the table that I really value, uh, and I hope to continue to serve with you all. So, good luck tomorrow. I'll be at forty five West Main, uh, see the results. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hall. All right, aye. Alright, I don't think I have anything to add. I call that. The government's, the government's budget, see, well, hoping and your chance to do it, which from the.
I did, I didn't say anything. And this is that part, I don't remember.
Move on now to, this is the resolutions. Um, first item is adopting a resolution point three, that's zero seven, annexation number seventy-five. Adopting an annexation plan for certain property containing seventy-three point nine four six four acres. Consisting of real property located at uh eleven thirty-one Avondale Road, Westminster, Maryland, two one one five seven. Also identified as tax account number zero seven dash zero two eight five five five, map zero zero four five, grid two zero zero two one. Parcel zero zero four six and comprising plus or minus seventy-two point eight seven two two acres. And one point zero seven four two acres of state highway administration property containing a portion of Maryland Route thirty-one, often known as doing the red. Which property is the subject of petition for annexation submitted by the owners of the petition from a fortune of the subject property to the mayor and common council of what? Uh, Mr. D, would you like to add to all this?
Uh, no, again, staff is recommending that the mayor and common council adopt the annexation plan, annexation seventy-five.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anybody have any more questions or comments on this before we move on? Alright, um. Very good, Mr. Kalachi.
I'll move to adopt resolution twenty-three dash oh seven.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kalachi. There's a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three dash zero seven, which is adopting an annexation plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, please.
You need to, I'll take.
Thank you. There's a motion by Mr. Kalachi, second by Mr. Hall. Um, any further discussion? We've none? We want to vote. All those in favor of adoption of resolution twenty-three dash zero seven, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
When the votes say nay, the ayes seem to have it and the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Move on now to adoption of um, as amended, of resolution twenty-three dash zero two, annexation number seventy-five. Emblarding the corporate boundaries of the city of Westminster by annexing into the city certain property containing seventy-three point nine four six four acres. Contiguous and adjoining to the city's existing corporate boundaries consisting of the industrial zone proportion of real property. Located at thirty-one, uh, sorry, excuse me, at eleven thirty-one Avondale Road, Westminster, Maryland, two one one five seven. Also identified as tax account number zero seven dash zero two eight five five five, map zero zero four five, grid zero zero two one. Parcel zero zero four six and comprising plus or minus seventy-two point eight seven two two acres and point, sorry, and one point zero seven four two acres. State Highway Administration property containing a portion of Maryland Route thirty-one. There's a motion for adoption.
Council President, I'll make a motion for adoption.
Alright, there's a motion by Mr. Hoff and a second by Mr. Kabachi. Um, Mr. D, anything else you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Alright, thank you. And if you want somebody to comment. You know, back in ancient times, annexation or expanding the city's boundaries was, was an important event. And it is again, because this is really an important event. It's a large, it's a large annexation. It's very significant. So I think it's important to keep that in mind. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, the ayes seem to have it and the ayes have it, and the um, the resolution. Welcome to City of Westminster.
That was like.
No, why would you say that? Ancient Rome, yeah. Once the original boundaries. Thank you. In ancient Rome. Once they set the original boundary, city of Pomerianism, it's called, you could only increase it if Rome fought, successfully fought a war and annexed territory to the empire somewhere. Then they can reduce the acres by.
Oh, right here.
I know, right?
No swords, I mean, no swords for the cabinet. Like a law, break it down.
No looking pen, guys.
Once in a while, I have to drag out my time of history.
That's, that, thank you.
Um, next item is adoption of ordinance two zero two three dash zero three, fiscal year twenty-four plan. The ordinance of the mayor and common council of Westminster, Maryland, approving and adopting a budget for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-three. And ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. May I have a motion for adoption of the budget?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion for adoption of the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff. Uh, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Gilbert. There's been a motion by Mr. Hoff and a second by Ms. Taylor. And, you know, turn to the administrator in just a moment to to talk about this a little bit. Uh, and I want to note that what we, we're gonna have to have. An amendment in the form of a substitute here because we have made a couple of small changes as a result of the work session that we had. So we'll need to adopt those things. But I just want to say before we do that. But, you know, I want to thank everybody. I want to thank the staff who worked very hard on this, particularly Ms. Zimholz, who struggled through, not feeling very well, you know, and doing a lot, a lot of this time. But I just want to thank my colleagues because this process really began with the retreat that we all had, with the strategic funding that we all had. I think it's important, we keep that in mind because that's when the mayor and council had the opportunity. To to think about what our priorities were going to be for the city, not just for the year, but for the years ahead. And we took that opportunity and we built a strategic plan with the with Ms. Zimholz. And the budget is the realization of that plan because if you don't put money into it, it doesn't really matter. And so that's what we've done. We put money into the things that matter. They don't, they matter to the city, they matter to the people that live here. They matter to the future because a lot of the things that we're talking about here are things that we won't necessarily see for a couple of years. But they're gonna, they're gonna be very important to the city in the long term. You know, just as we did with the fiber, with building the fiber network. Still, we're doing with the water reuse project and a number of other things that are critical to the city's future itself. I'm very proud of all we've done here. We've built a budget, not only guarantees essential services and public safety. But it also provides opportunities for the city to continue to take this forward thinking actions that provide the foundation for downtown redevelopment. And economic development, economic development that doesn't just create jobs, which is critical, but it also provides important amenities to our city at any cost. Important as we think about how we're going to help. This was done while not only maintaining the same property tax rate we've had for the eleventh year in a row. But it's planned to be sustainable. We do not anticipate any tax increases in the immediate future because we, we try to build a budget that avoids having to do that. I'm very pleased to note that we also continue to reduce the city's bonded indebtedness, which is a policy decision that the mayor and council made some years ago. We've been paying down the city's debt successfully over several years. And we've been able to do that with the help of some aggressive efforts to pursue federal and state funding in a number of areas. As well as some very good financial management, you know, the mayor and council have done along with staff. So, very proud of those things. So. I think this is a very good budget. I think it's a budget that's forward-thinking. It's a budget to serve our citizens well. Proud of being the finance committee chair as we worked on this process and looking forward to adopting it um here tonight. Ms. Zimholz, anything you'd like to, I I know you've got to share a few things about what's gonna be in our amended.
Are you ready for me to share?
Go ahead.
Okay. On May first, two thousand and twenty-three, the common council introduced ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh three. Otherwise known as the fiscal year twenty-four budget at a special mayor and common council meeting. Uh, since then, we've had a work session and found a couple of typos, a couple of changes, um, that. Include a slight change in police expenses in the general fund uh to accommodate a recent hire. A correction to the expected amount of highway user funds in the capital projects funds. To be received and a reclassification of the recording of fiscal year twenty-three highway user funds received in fiscal year twenty-three. But to be used in fiscal year twenty-four and other minor changes as well. Those changes are included in your packet today and they are ready for an amendment. Um, as you mentioned, in the form of a substitute. Um, and the ma- the staff uh are recommending adoption of amended ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh three. The fiscal year twenty-four budget. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Ms. Zimholz. So, um, this time I will entertain a motion uh to substitute the staff by recommendation uh for the budget ordinance. Now, it's a motion that's so good. There's a motion by Mr. Hoff. Is there a second?
Okay.
There's a second by Ms. Gilbert. Is there any further discussion? There are none? Move on to vote. All those in favor of amending, uh, of the amendment in the form of a substitute, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay, the ayes seem to have it and the ayes have it, and the budget ordinance is amended. Now we return to the discussion of the budget ordinance itself as amended. So no further discussion on the budget. Mr. Kalachi, you have gone yet?
I'm good, Mr. President. I I got all my questions out over the past couple of weeks.
Very good.
I think I'll point a clarity. Um, so, the the amendment, the ordinance amendment that you emailed us is the one that we are doing tonight, right?
Correct.
Because, okay, I just want to clarify because I don't remember seeing updated packet or whatever.
Mr. Barber has sent out an updated packet as well.
Oh, I must have missed that.
Maybe in there, but the one that I sent you is the current one.
Yes, okay. I just wanted to make sure we have the right one on the case. That's, that's all.
Anyone else? Alright, here's no further discussion. You want to vote? All those in favor of adopting the budget ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, the ayes seem to have it and the ayes have it. Uh, Mr. Marver, you recorded a voting of favor. Thank you. Alright, so very, very good. Thank you. Alright, we'll move on now to unfinished business. Uh, there's no unfinished business of which I'm aware. Is there any unfinished business to bring before the council? Here are any, we want the new business. We have four items, new business force, right? The first is approval to purchase Motorola mobile radios for Motorola Solutions uh for the police. Chief Lebo.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. The police department has forty-five Motorola mobile radios, the radios that are installed in vehicles. Majority of the radios are approximately twenty years old. Up to this point, we've been replacing them as they would break. Uh, as Motorola no longer supports this model, we're stock replacement parts for these radios. As a result, the vendors can't make the repairs to broken radios. Um, we have been replacing broken radios with the new Apex sixty-five hundred mobile radio. Additionally, our older radios lack certain interface capabilities with our neighboring law enforcement agencies. The department recently applied for a burn justice assistant grant, BJ grant, funds through the governor's office of crime control and prevention. And we were awarded fifty thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and sixteen cents. Which would allow us to purchase eight new Motorola Apex sixty-five hundred mobile radios at a cost of six thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents each. The department received an additional five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars in grant funds. To cover the labor cost of removing our existing radios and installing the new radios. Motorola Solutions Incorporated has the state of Maryland contract number two three five five one. For the seven hundred megahertz statewide system. Staff is recommending that the mayor and common council authorize the purchase of eight Motorola Apex sixty-five hundred mobile police radios. From Motorola Solutions Incorporated at a total cost of fifty thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and sixteen cents. Utilizing the grant funds obtained through the governor's office of crime control and prevention.
And, that's it, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Uh, very good, thank you. Alright, may I have a motion to approve the purchase of moving?
Some moves, President.
There's a motion by Mr. Kalachi. Is there a second?
Okay.
The second by Ms. Gilbert. Um, what, any discussion or questions for the chief?
Um, Mr. President.
Mr. Kalachi.
I'd just like to thank the chief and uh staff. I'm sure he did not do this alone, but obviously we need these. We gotta replace our radios. They went out and found some. Uh, grant money to do significant portion of these things. It's expensive and I just want to say thank you for job well.
Very, very, thank you. Ms. Gilbert?
Um, yeah, I have a question. So there was forty-five radios and you commented that several have been replaced kind of as we've been visiting. As they, as they have been breaking. Um, and now we have eight. So are you expecting a larger amount? At some point, that's gonna need to be replaced sooner than later or like, how, how many or what's your timeframe with?
So we've had, we've built into our budget process incrementally replacing the um, Motorola radios that we have. Uh, we were on the uniforms. Uh, we have just been replacing the Motorola as as they break. Um, but we will continue to look in for future grant money uh to potentially purchase a bulk amount of the Motorola radios. If not continuing to replace it instead of.
And they work well together. Obviously, they work well together instead of purchasing in one lump sum again.
Yes.
Ms. Gilbert, yes, good?
Yeah.
Good. Anyone else? Alright, now, here's no further discussion. We want to vote. All those in favor of approval of the purchase of the Motorola, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, the ayes seem to have it. Uh, next item is approval to waive competitive bidding for good cause due to city of Westminster's own statute thirty-six procurement and compact, section thirty-six. Dash four, specific regulations for purchase and installation of a new generator from Fidelity Power. Ms. Zimholz?
Thank you, sir. Oh, no. All sorted. The city has several pump stations located throughout the collection service area. Each pump station has its own backup generator for emergency situations. Most of the pump stations were installed prior to nineteen ninety and their generators have been in service at that time. Um, in April of this year, the city experienced a citywide power failure. Many of you remember that. Um, in fact, it was outside of the city as well, in the county. During this time, there were, there was damage to the relays for the generator at pump station eight, which is located at seven hundred volts more volbar. This generator has been in service since the seventies, which is a whack. Due to the age of the equipment, parts are hard to find. Um, we would need to replace ten relays and if they can be found. That would have a cost of a ru- roughly fifteen hundred dollars per relay. Replacement of the relays does not guarantee that the issue will be resolved. And so it's our um. Understanding that we would like instead to purchase a new generator. Total project cost is sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Um, the current transfer switch is a Kohler brand. Um, if we install a different brand generator, that would more void our warranty on the transfer switch. And Fidelity is the company that is the local Kohler dealer in our area. The capital budget for fiscal year twenty-four has two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the replacement of this particular jetty. So the budget you just adopted, which goes into effect in July, has the funding for this project. However, now we need the project sooner than than we anticipated because of the outage. Um, again, the total project cost is sixty-eight thousand dollars, which is significantly less than budgeted. Fidelity requires fifty percent of the total cost um within thirty days of the um order to purchase. Uh, so this will be included if it's approved by mayor and council in a budget amendment that will be introduced later this month. It's a little clunky, sorry for that, but staff recommends that the mayor and common council authorize the purchase and installation of a new generator for pump station eight. From Fidelity Power Systems and the total amount of sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. That concludes the report, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you. Let's get a motion, then we can, we have a motion to waive the um competitive bidding of large good cause.
Look, make the motion.
A motion by Ms. Gilbert. Is there a second?
Seconded.
And a second by Mr. Hoff. Any questions from Ms. Zimholz? Ready to debate?
Sir, did you say a second by Councilmember Dayhoff?
Yes. Yes, motion by Ms. Gilbert, second by Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify the record.
Any, any questions from Ms. Zimholz?
Yeah. My only comment would be honestly, for CCKW generator, this actually isn't. At all of the Gilf price, even if we do have to sell the sources. That's, that's actually pretty.
Alright, very good. Thank you. Mr. Hoff?
I was gonna comment, um, I I would like all our things to come in, but it's fantastic. So full steam ahead.
I'm price generators mainly, but it sounds good. Anyone else?
Nobody's getting used to this.
Alright, here's no further discussion. Move on to vote. All those in favor of approval of the um waiver, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay, the ayes seem to have it and the ayes have it. And uh. You want to vote, okay. Thank you. Next item is change order number three for GHD in the amount of five hundred and ten thousand dollars for additional construction, management. Inspection and testing services from, for the Westminster E N R branch. Next item.
Thank you, Mr. President.
The original ENR projects from GHD for engineering outlined a substantial completion date of fifteen twenty-two, thousand two hundred and six days and a final completion date of nine twenty-four twenty-two, one thousand three hundred and fifty-six days. Unfortunately, the contractor HRI has delayed this project significantly. As of HRI's latest schedule update, the anticipated substantial completion date is nine twenty-two twenty-three with an anticipated final completion date of twelve twenty-five twenty-three. The city has exhausted funds in the contract with GHD because of the delay of HRI. Therefore, it is necessary to adjust the contract and increase funding for additional construction management inspection and testing services. GHD is proposing approximately eighty-five thousand dollars a month, per month for six months for the HRI's anticipated substantial completion date. If that date is further delayed, the city may consider another change order. Funds have been, been exceeding for this project. Staff will prepare a budget amendment for council review in May to reacallie, reacallie funds likely from sewer funds reserves. Additionally, we have notified HRI that intend to pursue the related damages. Staff recommends that the mayor and common council recruit change one of three with GHD in the amount of five hundred and ten thousand dollars for additional construction management, inspection and testing services for the Westminster ENR project.
Thank you, Mr. Day. I have a motion to approve the change order.
Mr. Council President, I'll make a motion to approve the change order.
Thank you. The motion by Mr. Hoff, is there a second?
All seconded.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. The motion by Mr. Hoff, and the second by Mr. Day. We'll open up for questions here, but I think Ms. Imholtz, you know, maybe not tonight, because I think you've got a plan on agenda, but I think maybe an update on where we stand with, you know, the whole process of we're still waiting, you know, the pandemic, I think, maybe some.
Yes.
Um, any question?
Council President, um, my only comment is here, I don't think any of us are, you know, thrilled to have to move forward with this. What it is, what it is, what it is, and you know, we, we are kind of, don't have a choice here. Um, so we kind of have to move forward. That would be my one comment.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Kavachi?
So good, Mr. President. Two questions. Number one, um, eighty-five thousand dollars a month is what they're charging us to continue overseeing, testing um, is that in line with what we have been paying up until this point? Is it more, is it less?
It is in line with what we've been paying. This particular change order includes um inspectors. So they are on the ground almost every day, making sure that what has been put in was what was supposed to be put in and making sure that the contractor fixes if it wasn't done correctly. So that's, that's why this one's a little bit more expensive because it includes a lot of people that are there most days.
Second question is, does GHD have any culpability in us being in this situation?
Um, that's a legal question that I think will be defined at a later point, but the reason that we're here right now is because HRI has not met milestone one and HRI has not completed the project.
But throughout the entire process, GHD's been involved in terms of management, correct?
It has, yes. In this particular change order, GHD is acting as the owner's representative. Um, so providing the oversight on the day-to-day with the inspectors and um, there's a variety of contractual things where when we have, we have a city have an issue, we go through GHD in order to resolve it with.
That's been the case since the beginning of the project.
It has, yes. And this was the rate, unfortunately, this is the second time we've come to you asking for a change order for this purpose. This was the rate that they were giving us the last go around as well.
I wish I could be involved in messing, be, be part and parcel to messing up jobs for my clients that cost them money and getting paid more for it. It's a, it's a good gig.
I think GHD is just as excited as we are to get this project finished.
No, I don't know why I gave me that thousand back a month. I think they wanted to delay it as long as they could.
Who else we should be heard?
Mr. President.
And Mr. Dayhoff.
And the GHD contract, no, I, we're, the um, the GHD pays um recreation fund, doesn't it, like we're split that?
It's a line. The GHD contract in this case is just with the city.
Just with the city, so we don't get approximately fifty percent.
That's correct. We pay the entirety of the contract.
Anyone else?
Mr. President and Mr. Reo.
Alright, thank you. Alright. I'm not much of a pro, but you all, I think, know what we have to do. Um, yeah, if further discussion, move on to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay, the I seem to have the I's habit, but the change order number three is approved. Change order number fourteen for GHD in the amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for additional construction based engineering services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The original ENR project stipulation GHD for engineering outlined a substantial completion date of sixteen twenty-two, one thousand two hundred and sixty-six days and a final completion date of nine twenty-four twenty-two, one thousand three hundred and fifty-six days. Unfortunately, the contractor HRI has delayed this project significantly as HRI's latest schedule update anticipated substantial completion date is nine twenty-two twenty-three with an anticipated final completion date of twelve twenty-two twenty-three. The city has exhausted funds in this contract with GHD because of the delay with HRI. Therefore, it is necessary to adjust the contract and increase funding for additional construction based engineering services. GHD is proposing approximately forty-five thousand dollars a month for seven months for the HRI's anticipated substantial completion date. If that date is further delayed, the city may reconsider another change order. Once uh, been needed for this project, staff will prepare a budget amendment that council will give a major reacallie funds likely from sewer fund reserves. Additionally, we have notified HRI that we intend to pursue the related damages. Staff recommended that the mayor and common council recruit change order fourteen GHD in the amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for additional construction based engineering services for the Westminster ENR project.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Day. Let's get a motion, uh, on this, uh, change order number fourteen. May I have a motion to approve?
Council President, I'll make a motion to approve.
Alright, thank you. Um, the motion by Mr. Hoff, is there a second?
Second.
The second by Ms. Gilbert, thank you. Um, any questions or comments? Earlier comments scanned. Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, the I seem to have the I's habit, and change order number fourteen is approved. We'll move on to departmental reports. Ms. Imholtz?
Thank you, sir. I want to start off tonight by echoing the mayor's comments and thank our city clerk for um, the work that he's done. Not that often that we have a council meeting the night before an election, or at least it's not been the case anywhere I've ever worked. Um, and I think maybe also Mr. Barber as well. Um, it's a very big undertaking to put together an election. It starts early on and every single decisions that's made, we have to try to make sure um, that we are helping those who need to vote as much as possible and staying out of the way as much as possible. Um, and if we do it right, you don't ever see how hard it is. And I think Mr. Barber has done it right so far, so I want to just thank him for that. Um, I also just want to talk for just a minute about the budget and, and the work that we've done over the past year on that. You all know it takes a long time to put together, um, but we do, I do not take it for granted and staff does not take it for granted uh, the relationship that we have with council and the relationship that you have with each other. That's the reason that we are at a place where our budget is so successful, our budget process is so productive. Um, and I just want to, I don't take that for granted, so I want to take that opportunity to thank you all for that um, for continuing to communicate to me um, and to communicate to staff what your expectations are through the year um, through the strategic plan and through the committees that we have and just through our everyday conversations to make sure that what's on your mind is in my mind, so we can get it in the budget. Um, and of course, I want to thank staff. This process starts early on in January. It's frequently, you know, get this done in the next couple of weeks or tomorrow and they always do that. There's a lot of double checking, triple checking. We still make mistakes. Um, and so I want to thank Councilmember Hoff, who at the very last minute solved a couple of typos that we had. That's an example of what I'm talking about. This, this doesn't happen everywhere. Just want to take a moment to thank everybody for that. So we are going to start off with our recreation department tonight because we got Flower and Jazz on Saturday.
Yes, we do. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to take a moment to, to thank you, mayor and city council for your continued support of the recreation department. It is so very important to know that we have the support that we need to continue to improve upon our existing facilities, protect our very valuable human resources, um, and also to continue to dream big um, and endeavor into some legacy projects and think about um, what type of services we want to be offering our citizens many, many years from now, once we're all gone from the seats that we're sitting in today. So thank you for working um, so well together and so, and providing us with so much support. I will speak for my colleagues in the room and say because you are so supportive of staff and our efforts, it allows us to work collaboratively together. Um, none of us really operate in a, in a silo with our arms around what is ours. We share equitably um, and we try to help each other out when we can, and that's a testament to your continued support of our operations. So thank you so much for your dedication to us and to everything that we offer and the work that we do every day. So. With that, let me move on to the work that we're doing every day. Um, yes, we have actually two events this week. Uh, Wednesday night is our mom's Sunday night at Martin's. Uh, that's sold out in hours when we actually bought tickets on sale. We have a cool house for that. Um, and then Flower and Jazz is headed our way on Saturday from ten AM to four PM. Um, street closure will be along well, the whole way down to Anchor Street. So um, this festival actually goes past the arts council so that we can incorporate them into our festivities. And so um, if you're looking for a gift for mom, please come out and join us on Saturday. We have some great vendors. If you're looking for plants for your garden, we'll have those too. Live entertainment. It's a great family event, so we certainly hope to see everybody out um, on Main Street on Saturday. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the recreation department?
Just one comment, the weather looks positive, so, yeah.
Councilmember Hoff said it, so.
Oh, no.
Alright, we will move on with to the public works department. Mr. Day.
Ms. Imholtz, uh, I'd like to start off by just thanking the mayor and common council for I know what the last weekend's come to you, uh, everything that you put into uh, approving this budget that was put in front of you. Definitely benefits public works, uh, I'm sure I can get projects done that the city needs to get done and uh just want to extend my gratitude for that. And also to anybody who's running, good luck tomorrow. Uh, rather than that, I'm going to move on. Uh, rain's really making the grass grow and we can't mow, so um, I'm sure by next week we'll be behind. Um, but uh, we're working on that. We have uh, been working with that, with the Flower and Jazz stuff to get that ready. And uh, we have two projects that are picking, getting ready to kick off here in town. Um, we have one getting ready to go out to bed and one that's already dead, dead for some water main project, so um, we'll look forward to get to these projects soon. That would complete my report.
Are there any questions for the public works department? If none, we will move on to the IT departments. One.
Thank you. Um, let's get to echo the segments. Just thank you to mayor and common council for the work you guys have been doing. It is very much appreciated. It's a lifeblood we need to do, keep things right, keep lights on, network and computer wise, provide computers and support to our sister departments that we do every day. Um, it's been a very interesting, I'm coming in the middle of this, so uh, it was hot and heavy from the time I got here to get things figured out. Um, so um, learned a lot really quickly of how we do things here, which was, it's a breath of fresh air from a big, large organization. Where more of your fault is what you get. Um, had a say in that and to really think and, and uh, really put thought into those decisions we make of what we need to purchase and how we do that, um, was, was very enlightening to me. So let's go, thank you and uh, for the journey, good luck. That's my report.
Are there any questions for the IT department? Here, now we move on to human. Is there any question? We'll move on to the human resources department. Ms. McCullough?
Good evening, thank you, Ms. Imholtz. Um, thank you, mayor and council for supporting um, our team uh, and approving the, the budget for, for this year, upcoming year. Um, the H R uh, department would like to report uh, next week will be uh, open enrollment for employee benefits starting on May fifteenth, uh, and that will run through May twenty-sixth. Uh, communication will be going out to staff this week. That concludes my report.
Are there any questions from the human resources department? Here now, we'll move on to the planning department. Mr. Deepa?
Thank you. Uh, I too want to thank the mayor and common council for your support. Uh, with your support, the community planning development staff, as well as the envision economic development and zoning activities through the fiscal twenty-four budget that um, council member uh, Hoff had mentioned. It is greatly appreciated and I echo what Abby said too of the collaborative effort between staff. It, it is uh, well worth it working here together and we do work well together. Um, with that, um, the, on our, on April fifth, the storage district commission approved a demolition permit for an existing single-family detached dwelling at three twenty-eight East Main Street. Building is not in good shape and it's barely staying up as it is. Um, we did receive a very nice detailed architectural and historical report, which the HCC deemed as being the the uh, the, the type of report they want to see from this time forward. So that was good to get. Um, the, also, they did review a seven hundred and fifty-two square foot, two-story rear yard addition and other facade improvements to the existing structure at twenty-three North Center Street. Uh, the HCC provided input to the applicant regarding the addition facade and other improvements that may be eligible for historic tax credits and facade improvement funding. Uh, on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, the planning and zoning commission is scheduled to hold a public hearing on the Ellsworth Cemetery annexation. And the mayor and common council has scheduled to hold the public hearing for the annexation on June twelfth, twenty twenty-three. And that completes my report.
President?
Ms. Gilbert?
I have a question. On the demolition of the East Main Street location, is there a plan to put another um building in or rental or something in that location once that is demolished?
My understanding is they are looking at putting a duplex in that location. The HCC did point out if, um, if you actually design it where it's more um, in keeping of the downtown historic district, you can even get further tax credits, even with new construction.
That was three twenty-eight you were asking about?
Yes.
Are there any other questions from Mr. Deepa? Here now, we will move on to the finance department. I want to thank um, Ms. Rogers for all of her hard work putting the budget together. Um, and this is her first year doing that as well, so um, next year, we're going to be experts on the budget for sure. But, Ms. Rogers?
Thank you, Ms. Imholtz. Uh, good evening, mayor and council. Um, first of all, I wanted to say uh, thank you for your support. I know I'm echoing what everyone else is saying with the budget, but it really is an important process for those um, that are here, um, citizens who here in person tonight, but also are listening via video or maybe later. This is really the roadmap that we use um, for the next year for the staff. And quite honest, it lays a foundation for years to come when we look at capital and planning for those projects as well. So it really is a big deal. And um, we appreciate your support and hearing all the things that we brought for, forward to you for approval. And um, and I'll echo Mr. Moore's sentiments that um, this being my first year here, uh, I've done budgets for many, many years, well over twenty, in many locations, and it's not always a collaborative process. But it's nice that the directors and staff can have that input in what's important to their areas. Um, and that we can look at that as a comprehensive plan together. So I appreciate that process and that effort. So thank you. And um, then it was fun. It was a lot of fun. And I, I wish you all well though that are running. I mean, I do wish you all well. So, thank you. That's the end of my report.
We'll take Ms. Rogers' temperature after.
We'll take Ms. Rogers' temperature after. He does love her job, yes. Well, on this side of the table, we love us spreadsheets, and maybe that's it. Are there any questions for the Finance Director? Hearing none, we will move on to the Police Department. Chief Level?
Good evening, Mayor Council. I'm going to echo what my, uh. Alex also said, and that's our sincere appreciation on behalf of the women and men of the Police Department. Not only with the budget, but, um, in general, I know that. They expressed to me and I see, uh, your support for us, and that goes a long way. It's a tough time right now for law enforcement. And it's very important, I think, as far as the quality of life goes for women and men sworn and, and civilian support staff. I think, um, also what the others have said, uh, I think is a testament to our city administrator also. I've seen this come a long way as a group, as, uh, department directors. And I think it shows at a time like this during the budget, but, uh, also throughout the year. So I'm, uh, sincerely appreciative to your support and to the city administrator's support with all of us. Um. Add on to what we talked about earlier, we had Captain Schuster, Detective Brandt, Detective Kent, and police recruit Vera. Participating in the, uh, Walkham Isle, Andrew Shoes, uh, Rape Crisis Intervention Services event last Saturday. Um. And we have next Monday, the Chamber of Commerce Public Safety Awards, where several of our members will be recognized for their achievements. Uh, not only during the last fiscal or calendar year, but also during the years that they didn't have the event because of COVID. And that's being held at the Pleasant Valley Fire Hall issue.
Are there any questions for the police? Councilmember Dayhoff, do you have your report for the fire departments? Mr. President, with our sincere gratitude for the fiscal year twenty four budget, that concludes departmental reports.
I'd like to thank very much Ms. Immels and thank all the departments. It was. The final item on our agenda tonight is citizen comments. When we invite the public to address the mayor and council. Any issue came to tonight's agenda or any other city issue. For citizens not attending, we invite you to send us your comments via email as comments at westminstermb.gov. All comments received by email will be shared with mayor and council. Commenters, uh, sending some emails should include their address and phone number with their comments. We will now invite comments from anyone who is present. Um, and, uh, ask everyone to, uh, anyone who wishes to comment, uh, to please give us your name and address. Is there anyone with us tonight who wishes to be heard? Alright.
You're it ladies.
Waiting for this moment.
Very good. Well, that concludes our agenda. Uh, I'm leaving. This is the last regular meeting for the turn of this mayor and common council. It's been a privilege to serve the citizens of the Westminster in the past four years. And for me, it's been an honor to have been elected by my colleagues as their president. Our next and last meeting will be a special meeting held on Monday, May fifteenth. After which the new council will be sworn in and have a organization meeting. That, without objection, we are adjourned.
Thank you.